958, perfect. Oh, here's Will. Nope. Will, can you hear us? Says failed to change role of the panelist, error code 3041.
Well, I tried to sign in on the other computer repeatedly and it would not let me in. And so I'm sitting on the laptop computer, and this is the same problem that we had a few months ago, I think.
Okay, but not the problem we had two weeks ago?
What was the problem two weeks ago? Oh, two weeks ago I had trouble signing in on the other computer as well, and I switched to this one. So somehow, because it's a webinar, it's, I think it's not letting me in. Is it because you have me set up as a host or something?
Um, no. Don't think this is set up any differently that I could tell. Let me check. Let me see, I might, I might just be able to bring in everybody's video. Well, would you please try one more time?
Log out and log back in?
Yeah.
All right.
Let me see. Do it that way. Oh, looks like the same error, Will. Now, Will, is your video on? Can you turn your video on as an attendee? Will, can you turn your video on as an attendee?
I am trying. I don't see any, any option to do that. You want me to try the other computer again?
Yeah, and I'll try one other thing. I'll see if I can, without losing the meeting, switch. I've done everything I can in the settings. Any ideas from anybody on here for what might work? All that's happening is when Will comes in as an attendee, I get that error. I think it says 3041. And I can Google that.
I'll try on some other platform.
It says you should leave the webinar by leaving the session, find the email you were sent when designated as alternative post, and click on the meeting link with that email. So I can also go in and remove you as host. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. Sorry. Okay, Will, I'm re-sending your invitation that Christie sent you a couple of weeks ago to W Hathaway at Scioto Township. And the U of M Information Technology Services website says that should work. Right? All right. So we're just waiting for Will to join. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. And as soon as he's here, he'll call the meeting to order. I see a phone number, 810. Is that you, Will?
Jessica, I see there are numerous questions in the chat.
Oh, sorry about that. I didn't see. Oh, I see. There's questions in the question and answer. Can chat be, Harvey asks, chat on my computer is disabled, can it be enabled? You know, we, and video is not an option for attendees. Thank you, Rob, for all the suggestions, including getting Will his very own teenager, because they would fix it instantly. So, thank you for giving me. So the chat, we're keeping disabled to just encourage people to speak public comment during the designated times by voice. And the question and answer, just use this if there's logistical issues that come up. I do see one hand, Will. Somebody might have something else helpful to offer. Wendy? Okay, I don't see anything.
Now, so we can-
Yeah, go ahead, Will.
What a, what a pain. All right. Well, with that auspicious start, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are operating remotely because of ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, everyone, for being patient as we got started. When we call the role, please indicate the township and the county in which you are located, as well as whether you are present or not. Please call the role.
Hathaway?
Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, present.
Palmer? And, and Palmer, you're unmuted. If all members could unmute themselves, please. Palmer?
Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, I'm present.
Flintoff, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, also present. Corto?
Present in Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Jerome?
Present in Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel?
Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel? And Jane, you are also muted. Is that, ah, I think I need to, I think your phone is muted.
Is it better?
There you go. We'll keep it like that.
All right. Yeah. Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Thank you. All here.
Great. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to make the following changes to the agenda. I'll list these in order so that they appear on the agenda, and then I'll explain the basis for the changes. So the, the changes are to remove entirely the advisements to the Board of Trustees from the clerk, to add to unfinished business a new item, I2, the Lock Alpine fireworks permit application, remove entirely item J5, possible action township administrator model, remove entirely item J6, possible action shared governance model. And here's the explanation for the proposed changes. The clerk's advisements are matters that are subject of disagreement. They are points of contention about a motion at a prior meeting, and as such, this is a matter to be settled by the Board of Trustees, not an instruction to be added to the agenda. The Lock Alpine fireworks application was presented at an earlier meeting of the Board of Trustees and tabled. The applicants have asked to have their application reconsidered based on changing circumstances related to the COVID pandemic. Both items J5 and J6 are duplicative of the attached materials in J4, possible action discussion of Scioto Township administrative structure. All of the documents are the same, with the single exception of the overview for the township administrator model attached to J5. And while I hope that people will read that updated version of that document, it doesn't make any substantive difference in terms of actions that the Board of Trustees may choose to take this evening. All the materials related to this, to the discussion of the administrative structure were posted on the township's website on Friday, May 7th, to allow ample time for review by the Board of Trustees and the public. So those are the proposed changes I have for the agenda. Are there any other proposed changes to the agenda? Would someone like to move the agenda as amended?
Will?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had my hand up. I didn't know.
I didn't see your hand go up. Sorry, Jessica, sorry, Clerk Flintoff.
And I'll support.
Oh, all right.
Um, I wasn't making the motion. I, I had a comment. I, I would propose additionally that we change J4 to discussion, to make it a discussion-only item, and to remove J7 as its contingent, at least in my mind, and I think others, the way that we've structured it, on decisions around models. So to remove J7 and change J4 to discussion.
Well, in that case, I guess we're going to have to have a vote on each of the items because I don't agree with those two changes. So I guess what I would, what I would move is the changes, as I proposed them, not including the changes that Clerk Flintoff just offered. If there is support for that, then we can can vote, and if there's disagreement, then we can vote on, on the other items. Is there support?
I have a clarification question.
Okay.
And I'm not supporting what you're saying, Will, just so you're clear.
I understand.
Okay. Jessica, with what you were proposing with J4, you're saying you're just, the proposed change is that it be discussion only?
Correct.
And just removing the possible action that's there?
Correct.
Okay, I would support that.
Okay, so we have support for that. Well, perhaps the simplest thing to do is to vote on that particular item first and deal with that. So the first question then is a motion to change J4 to discussion only as, instead of a possible action item. And there's, that's the motion by Flintoff and support by Noel. And are there comments from members of the, of the Board of Trustees?
Why do we want to change it? You know, I, I'd like to change it because the committee, I thought the board at the time, after spending 50 minutes deliberating on that motion, that it was clear to all and in all of our subsequent conversations, as recently as Thursday, Donna, when we were in the administrative committee meeting, that tonight we would be really taking the chance to really kind of discuss, get into things. We, you know, could take action as early as 18 hours from now, if Will so desires, but that tonight was about discussion.
Um, Jane, I, I wouldn't call on you, but you're muted.
I'm, I'm on the phone, so-
Yeah, she's actually not muted.
I see, I see. Go ahead.
I want to recognize, because I, well, let's see where to go. Here's my, here's my thought. If I just step back and look objectively at where we are, the board appointed the committee to come up with a recommendation. And it's happened sometimes. The committee wasn't able to come together on one proposal, but has two. And, and those proposals are being represented to the board tonight, and we are now transitioning from the work of this committee to a decision process within the board. And it feels to me like it's the board's prerogative to decide when to begin taking action, when to leave it just discussion, when to set some next steps for itself. But to have a committee whose charge was to make a recommendation, then kind of prescribe to the board how to make and when to make its decision, feels inappropriate to me. Regardless of the content of the decision, just from a process point of view, it seems uncomfortable to me that, that a committee charged by the board to come back with recommendations are doing that, but they're also coming with directions on how and when to begin a decision process. That, that doesn't, there's something inconsistent about that.
May I just respond directly to Jane?
Sure.
Um, Jane, just to clarify, the motion I'm talking about that's on the front of the agenda was at the last board meeting where the board stated that we would come back for discussion. So that wasn't in committee. I, I would agree with you if it had happened the way you described.
Kathy?
My recollection and my notes say, from our last board meeting, that we said no vote would be taken on these issues tonight, period.
Well, I would like to counter that your notes must be incorrect, because the discussion was very clear on that motion before the vote. I raised the question, does this preclude the board from taking action? And Clerk Flintoff said of her motion, oh, thank you for pointing that out. I'll fix that. And she started typing in some text to preclude action into her motion. And then there was further discussion, and she deleted that text and said, okay, we won't make the motion preclude action by the Board of Trustees. In addition to that, the motion originally included language about making a decision-
Taking action two weeks from now, right? We took that out.
And that was taken out as well. So it was very clearly debated and discussed, and the motion was modified to make clear that it didn't preclude taking action. Now, that doesn't mean that we will take action. It just means that the board has the option to take action, and that's all it means by leaving it as a, a possible action item.
And we can, at the end of the day, we can do whatever is right right now.
That's right. The board can decide at this point what it wants to do. So the board could say we want to preclude ourselves from taking action later in the meeting, or the board could say, let's leave it the way it is, and we'll decide when we get there whether we're going to take action.
I think people need, residents need time to review the materials. They've only had a few days. And your recounting of it, Will, is not what I recall, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so where are we?
So-
Alec had his hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see a hand up where-
Alec?
I just wanted to clarify that that was the discussion regarding the opportunity to take action at a future meeting. It wasn't, it, it did not preclude us taking action at this meeting. We specifically, I was the 27th, and I know Will spoke specifically to the 7th, or what our date is today, the 11th. I, I guess I'm just in support of having the ability to take action this evening if deemed necessary. I do think that we've all had an exhaustive amount of time to look at these different options, and we've had discussions previous to this, even though the models, per se, haven't been in a model form on the, the website. But I'll leave it at that. I'll, I'll just sit, let it, what's my voting?
Are there any other members of the Board of Trustees who would like to comment on this particular question before we call the role? Seeing none, please call the role on whether to make the change to the agenda. So a vote, let's, we should be clear, a vote yes would be a vote to change the agenda and change this item so that it is discussion only and no action could be taken this evening.
And, and just, and J7, correct?
Well-
So I'm sorry, are we only considering J4 at this moment, or are we considering J7 as, as well?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Well, you, you had just stated previously, the motion is to, the motion on the table right now is to change J4 to discussion only.
Yeah, I think it's just that one item, and we'll deal with the next item separately.
Okay.
So Jacqueline, is that your question? Okay. Please call the role.
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
No.
Jerome?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Motion fails. J4 stays as possible action.
So the other quest, the other item that you, that Clerk Flintoff had proposed to remove from the agenda was item J7, and that is the-
J5, 6, and 7.
Oh, all right. Well, I actually had moved to remove J5 and J6. I think you addressed J7 in addition to those.
Whatever order you want to go in.
All right, so I would rather deal with J7 first. And J7 is the item for, that would, is the resolution dealing with compensation for the supervisor. And so I guess in, in, you are, I don't, do we have a motion on the table for this, or?
I'd like to make a motion to remove J5, 6, and 7 from-
I, I just thought we said, we, we agreed we were going to separate them.
We've already agreed.
Oh, oh, that's fine. So I have a motion to, I was just trying to take care of, take care of it. Motion to remove J7 from the agenda. Jim Pink just drafted these up. As you see, there's a lot of moving parts. He's here tonight to answer questions about how to structure these and the meaning of these. Some, the committee asked for some edits and variables. So I think there's some moving parts on how we set compensation. But more importantly, you know, this is part of, well, it is part of, I think, both models. It has some relationships to each model. So that's why I would advocate, you know, waiting until we, you know, a week or two, whenever it is, that we have clarity on where we're going.
Is there support?
I'll support.
So motion by Flintoff, support by Noel. Are there comments from the members of the board? Treasurer Palmer?
Removing this makes no sense. We can pass this motion because the board does determine to set the salary, and that discussion will come later. So there's no reason to remove this. It says the board can set it, so it's just verifying it. But the board does set the salary of the supervisor. So whether we need it or not, I guess that's the question.
Are there other comments by other members of the Board of Trustees? Seeing none, please call the role.
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
No.
Jerome?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Motion fails, 2 to 5.
So the other changes that I had proposed earlier to the agenda are to, just to review, to remove entirely the advisements to the Board of Trustees from the clerk, to add the unfinished business item, a new item I2 for the Lock Alpine fireworks, and to remove entirely item J5, possible action township administrator model, and remove entirely item J6, possible action shared governance model. Are there any objections to those changes to the agenda? Can, would someone move the agenda as amended?
I would just note, Will, the, the advisements aren't part of the agenda.
Well, they're on the agenda.
Yeah, the actual agenda that is adopted is the agenda on down.
Well, I still would like to have that removed from the document entitled the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Palmer. Support by Vogel. Please call the role.
So to remove the advisements, add I2 and delete J5 and J6?
Correct.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? No. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion fails, 2 to 5.
The motion fails?
No, it passed. I'm sorry, the most, the motion passes five to two, excuse me. Motion passes five to two.
Thanks. Um, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April twenty-seventh meeting. Trustee Vogel.
Uh, I did not see, I was not at the meeting on the twenty-seventh. It's the first one I've missed. And I did not see the minutes in the packet deck, so don't know why that is. But I would make a motion that we defer the approval of these minutes since they weren't in the deck packet.
Doesn't everybody else have them?
Is there support?
Hold on here. Hold on.
So motion by Vogel, support by Palmer. Is there comment?
There is a comment.
Clerk Flintoff.
There is a, a comment. The comment is that these minutes were in the, the packet. Um, and, and.
I did not see them.
Okay, so they were, in all honesty, folks, this is part of our issue. They were in the packet. Um, prior to publication, they have been posted under draft minutes under the April twenty-seventh meeting since, I think, the twenty-ninth, um, on another part of the website. And part of the issue here, and this sort of extraordinary yuckiness that we never want to be in again, is that we have a collaboration site and, and, and Will was finalizing an agenda in a way, and, and we don't have page numbers. I'm not, all I have to say is I'm not surprised that a document fell out. I also had to add a fire chiefs report and some other things. So there was a little bit of, um, it's atypical. Typically, I finalize the agenda and, and make sure everything's in there. This was not a typical weekend. Um, there's no protocol, um, for, for this sort of stuff. So we, we certainly can defer approval, but I can also pull them up if you wish. I don't know if there's anything on there that we need to approve. I'm trying to remember. I don't think there's anything that is super time sensitive.
Well, I, I would, first of all.
See your hand up, Will.
Sorry, oh, Alec, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Um, I'd just like to support the tabling of the minutes, and I, I think also, for a future work session with the BOT, I do think we need to work through some of these processes to make sure that they are, um, set and regulated submission timeline. I, I think there's also been some issues with content and summarization of public comment, as well as the inclusion of the correspondence and wanting to make sure, I think, that the supervisor's response to some of that correspondence is also included. So I would suggest that we, I would be in favor of supportive tabling the minutes and perhaps taking this subject up at a BOT work session to really work through some of the sort of inconsistencies we're, we're, we're having with the, the minutes and with our agenda and all of these approaches where we're, where I, I don't, I hate vetting it out here, but I think a BOT work session is in, in, in order.
Great.
Thank, thank you for pointing out that trustee Jerome had his hand up. I'm sorry, I missed that. I was just going to comment, um, to, in response to Clerk Flintoff's that, nobody was saying anything about you or, or your, or your work. Um, it was just an observation that the minutes weren't.
No, no, and that, that's fine, that's fine. It's honestly, they're just sitting right in front of me, so I didn't realize they hadn't, so.
I'm, I'm sure it was an oversight.
So it was motion by Palmer, support by Vogel to table approval until the next meeting?
I think it was just to table the minutes. I don't think there was a time specific.
Well, I can add the, if it's all right, Jane.
There's no need.
Okay.
Let's, let's just call the, let's just call the roll and move on.
All right. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next item is communications and written reports to the Board of Trustees. And I know that we were still getting a lot of communications still coming in. There's a lot of interest in topics on this agenda evidently, as well as other issues that people have communicated about. Um, and those materials, many of them were in the packet, but I understand Clerk Flintoff was adding items even today. Is that correct?
Sure, there were just four, um, from Harvey Summers, Elaine Brock, Peter, Peter Davis, um, Lila Skaj, Skaj, forgive me, and also Bob Hyde.
I think I saw one from Ms. Brock too, possibly.
Yes, Elaine Brock.
Okay. Um, all right, um, well, um, thank you, everyone who took time to write to the Board of Trustees since our last meeting. And the next item is, oh, there's office coordinators report. Do we want to highlight?
It's just included for your reference.
All right, so, so it's time now for public comment. Um, and I want to introduce this time. Um, this is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any manner under the purview of the Board of Trustees, including any items on this agenda. Later, throughout the meeting, the supervisor will ask for public comment on each item on this agenda for possible action. If your public comment is a possible action item, then you may comment later when the item is discussed by the board, or if you prefer, you may speak on that act, action item now. Um, I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. And of course, BOT Board of Trustees members may use their regular hands. That's, they want to be recognized. That's sometimes easier for me to see, although I apologize if I don't see you right away. Um, I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Um, all remarks should be addressed to the moderator and not to any other individual. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees on any one issue. Public comments are not an opportunity for back and forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers, and please do not involve personalities. Be as factual as possible. And to the trustees, I would add the reminder that we too should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. And that means, that means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying. Uh, nee- neither should we make verbal sounds to show support or opposition to others' comments. Um, that's one of the privileges of being unmuted. When we are in the roll call for votes, I want to make this point too, it is time to say yes or no. The addition of further comments is not appropriate when the vote is underway. With that, are there members of the public who would like to make a comment?
Oh, Will?
Yes.
Remind them that if you want me to keep time.
Oh, yes, please.
Thirty-second warning, but you would need to remind everyone.
Yes, thank you. Uh, trustee Noel will help by keeping time. Um, and so watch for her signal and, and my effort to alert you if your, if your time is nearing its end. Are there people who would like to speak?
Great. And we have fifty-five attendees here. We're going to start with Harvey Summers, followed by Roy Townsend. Harvey Summers.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Summers. I live at twenty-one twenty-nine Autumn Hill Drive. According to Michigan law, a recall may not be filed against an officer elected for a term longer than two years who has held a term for less than one year. I believe this is to allow voters time to monitor that official, to take the time to be sure that they truly find it necessary to recall that official. A recall is not to be rushed into. But I take from this the idea that an official has a lot to prove during that first year in office and should be cautious while gaining experience. I'm astonished and troubled that the supervisor has been pushing a major change to the township administrative structure to substantially increase his personal power at the expense of others. He pushed to be full-time rather than part-time, with salary doubled, the redrawing many of the lines of authority into his own hands. And he started this push after only a short time in office, pushing major changes with so little experiences to me both unwise and ill-considered. And I'm surprised, during last autumn's campaign, I don't remember the possibility of changing the supervisor's position to full-time being raised. Did I miss a major campaign plank? Did all of the candidates running on the slate with the supervisor agree that there would be a major push to change the supervisor's position after the election and agree to weaken their own authority as trustees, authority with which voters had entrusted them? Voters in the fall voted for only two full-time officers, the clerk and the treasurer. Voters expected the supervisor to be part-time, and Gillian Carey's careful research.